...2017 regular meeting of the Albion City Council. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, I'd ask you to place it on silent. I call this meeting to order and we will begin with a moment of silence. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cork Domingo, if you please call the roll.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. Are there any comments from council this evening? Councilmember Barnes.
Yes, I'd like to thank the Albion Public Safety Department under the leadership of Chief Kip for our police community relations unit, as I'm gonna call it. I was home and their chief is going through something based on an incident with an 11-year-old minority child. I support that chief and I'm glad that our chief and our deputy chief are ahead of the curve, that they're reaching out to the community proactive, getting our citizens involved and knowing that there's an open door with our police department. And I'd also like to thank the Albion Housing Commission under the direction of Ann Kemp, the administration, the maintenance department, and the auxiliary staff. They're doing a great job over there and I enjoy living there. Thank you.
Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that the assistant city manager, Stacy, myself, and councilmember Spicer went to the Fork Senior Center and did cookies, cocoa, and crafts, and we absolutely had a great time. It's always nice to be with some people with wisdom and to share with them, so I just wanted to thank Luanne Summers for having us. And we plan to do something again for Valentine's Day, so, thank you, Luanne.
Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. The first, I'd like to thank the staff, especially Len Reed, for an absolutely wonderful party on Friday. The food was amazing, as always. Councilwoman Reed, thank you very much. And I certainly had a good time leading the vistas in a rounding rendition of the 12 Days of Christmas. Thanks to the vista team for being good sports. Speaking of the vistas, my second thing is the whole Albion America Vista Initiative would like to invite you to a community dinner that they are hosting on January 15th, which is Martin Luther King Day. We are planning this event to bring the community of Albion together and to celebrate the legacy of Dr. King, and also to celebrate our community of Albion. We have a couple keynote speakers, our mayor and our city manager, along with some other folks from town, who will talk about the history of Albion and their connection with Dr. King's mission and vision. We will have this event at the Marshall Opportunity High School cafeteria, 225 Watson Street. The event starts at 5:00 and council, Mayor Brown and city manager Mitch will be speaking. And we're hoping to have the 4-H group Creative and Expressive Arts Program perform as well. The event is open to anyone in the community that would like to attend. If you'd like to help with food, or planning, or support of any kind, or if you know of anyone in your organization who may be interested, please have them contact our vista team leader, Cressy Vargo, at (51) 117-221-9182, or you can talk to me after the council meeting. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that, to paraphrase an old adage, you don't miss it until it's not available. I missed going from Michigan Avenue to Superior Street. I'm so happy to see it's open today. I don't know when it opened, but I went there on Saturday and it was closed, so today's and I'm so happy for the small things in life. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments from council this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to public comment. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum and speak only on agenda items at this moment, at this point. Please state your name and address.
Mary Slater, 517 East Michigan Avenue, speaking to the proposal A. Some of you may remember that we, the Sister City Committee, requested a special liquor license event last year for a chef from France who at last minute had to cancel. We have another chef coming, Frédéric Thierry, and he will be here for a week. He will be doing various things in the community, both at Albion College, at Harrington School. There's going to be a community event, and this particular event is a benefit for the Sister City Committee to help finance kids going to France. It will be at the Food Hub. It's a dinner. The chef will prepare a meal and then serve it. It'll be, and we, what is a French meal without wine? So, so we're asking for a special event liquor license from the state of Michigan. This will be a ticketed event. It'll be limited seating. There will be no minors there. I've contacted Albion Insurance for the liability and for the bond. I have the approval of the building authority that owns the Food Hub, and I've spoken to Chief Kip about that authorization. So are there any questions about this? So I hope you will support it. Thank you.
Nidia Wolf, 409 Irwin Ave. Last Thursday evening, you had a study session and you talked about a couple of things. One of them was the advancing Albion Plan, and it sounded like most of you, or all of you, were in favor of a positive move on this and hope that you will continue with that positive move tonight. And also for Cheryl Mitchell, Dr. Cheryl Mitchell, that you talked about $105,000 for her, and I hope that you will continue on that same vein. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment this evening on agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to consent calendar. This is approval of regular session minutes from December 4th, 2017. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. Items for individual discussion. Item A, request approval for resolution number 2017-51. A resolution for approval of Sister City Special Liquor License application. Is there a motion? So moved. Moved and seconded. Do you want anything else to say?
Well, I think Mary Slater did an excellent job of summarizing the application as part of the process for these special licenses. The property owner, which in this instance for the 112 East Erie Street, also known as the Food Hub, would be the Albion Building Authority. So they already approved the request for the liquor license and then from the local municipality, and that's the resolution you have before you.
Okay. Is there any discussion from council? Okay. Seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item B, request approval resolution number 2017-52. City of Albion supporting the reinstatement of the state historic tax credits relative to Senate Bill 469 and House Bill 5178. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Ask the manager to.
Okay, Mayor and council, this is relative to the two bills that are referencing the historic tax credits. It's my understanding that on the 13th, it actually passed the Senate, so it still needs to go through at the House, but it allows for the historic tax credits to also be beneficial to residential historic sites as well as the commercial sites. And if you recall, most recently, the Peabody Project was one that applied for the historic tax credits. So they're definitely a tool that are very beneficial to our community in that we already have a historic district designated. So I would recommend your approval of the support for these bills.
Is there any discussion from council? This resolution. Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in favor of this, obviously, but the question is, is it, do we, is there an opportunity? If we look around our city, we have an awful lot of older homes that are historic in nature. I think, I think of the Gardner House Museum for one. It's in the appropriate district, I believe, but there might be other homes that, and so the question is, is there a process by which we can expand our historic district to include those homes? I think about the ones off of Eaton Street up on the top of the hill is one, and there's a couple of others in the north side of the city, as well as properties on Irwin Avenue, and so I'm just wondering if there's a possibility of expanding our historic district to include those.
If I might respond, we have, well, the planning commission has actually moved forward with creating a historic district advisory committee. And we are awaiting the appointment of the members of that so we can move forward to address the issues you raised relative to going into other areas, neighborhoods in particular, so that residents can benefit from these credits.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further comment, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Request approval resolution number 2017-53, Calhoun County Land Bank and Albion Reinvestment Corporation Agreement. So moved. Support. Moved and supported. I, I see the land bank director here. I'd invite her if you wanted to speak to that. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Krista Trout Edwards, Director of the Land Bank. I spoke about this last Thursday. This is just a one-year extension of the existing land banking agreement. As I had mentioned, two of the properties are coming out for the theater project. Probably won't happen by the end of the year because they have to finish their environmental work, but it will happen in early 2018, and that would leave three remaining buildings. And so they have met the requirements we set forth last year, and so our board approved contingent on a support from the city council of Albion.
I would say I appreciate the invite from the director and councilwoman Reed. We had a meeting last week discussing this. The one thing that I was, I had mentioned during the meeting is, and what you explained is that probably just for time reasons, there's not enough time to go back and tinker, but I would hope, though, that as new entities are, I guess, recruited to go in these places, that they can, some of them can be, you know, for, you know, businesses, so.
And we do have quarterly meetings, and I think we can take up that topic at those.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion from council? Okay. Seeing no discussion from council, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item D, request approval advancing Albion action plan. So moved. Support. Moved and support. Is there any discussion from council? We had a pretty lengthy discussion last Thursday, so I appreciate that opportunity. As was mentioned, I think most of us would want to see redevelopment move forward in the city. My, my one concern is just making sure that, that it's done in an equitable way and a way that respects what, what makes Albion what it is. Basically, you know, we're post-industrial, but we're very rich in kind of an ethnic history, rich with, you know, socioeconomic class. We want to make sure that we can respect and kind of lift all boats as, as the town is reinvigorated and rises back. So with that, if there's seen no other comment, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item E, request approval resolution number 2017-56, fiscal year 2018 budget appropriations and fee schedules. So moved. Forward. Moved and supported. I'd ask the manager to give a summary.
Okay, Mayor and council, you've had a number of work sessions as well as the public hearing in regards to the 2018 fiscal year budget. For the audience, our fiscal year coincides with the calendar year, so that begins January 1. The, the general fund revenues are projected at, I'm going to round these, 3.8 million with appropriations of 4.6. The special, special revenue funds are 2.3 million with appropriations of 2.4. Debt service funds, 329,000 with appropriations of 326,000. Enterprise funds of 2 million with appropriations of 2.4 million. Internal service funds of approximately 268,000 with appropriations of 312. Other funds, 1 million, both revenues and appropriation and trust funds, approximately 1.3 million in revenues and appropriations. So total for all funds is 11,258,064 dollars in revenues and appropriations of 12,020,396,000. Just to give you some of the highlights of what are the changes in the proposed resolution. It includes the $3,000 allocation for the continuation of the Albion-Marshall Connector, which is made possible through a partnership with at least nine other organizations. We're really excited that their, their budget gap of about $30,000 is being spread through a number of partners so that their service can continue. It's a continuation of the assessing services where we shared the staff with the city of Marshall. The continuation of the recycling center with the partnership through Calhoun County Recycling. The storage of the road salt in partnership with the county, as well as continuation of the city-county partnership with Dispatch. And of course, our, one of our favorite partners, the Land Bank, and our partnership relative to the demolition of properties. One of the things that we do need to keep in mind is that 2017 marked the end of the sidewalk special assessment. So we, in the very near future, we're going to need to schedule a study session so that we can have a conversation around how the council wants to move forward relative to sidewalks and their repair and upkeep. Some of the major changes relative to staffing include the creation of a deputy treasurer clerk position, the full-time position, and then three part-time positions for code enforcement that would be two. One for clerical support in the city manager's office. The salaried employees were receiving a 2% increase because they don't, do not currently have a mechanism for an annual step increase. Then all employees would be receiving the general salary increase of 2% as well. We have the COPS grant match that allows for the creation of the community policing officer, and you also added funding for the Rieger Park Pond Repair for support of the redevelopment-ready community. There is that local match of the $4,000 to assist with the rewriting of the zoning. And those are the major highlights. I would welcome any questions and finance director, treasurer, Tom Mead is here as well. One thing I also want to mention, the recreation millage expires, so next year we will need to be seeking a renewal in regards to the recreation millage, which also supports the Senior Center, the Fork Senior Center.
I know there was discussion with the unions about the code enforcement after, is it six months, right?
10 months.
10 months, okay. Is there any, are there any questions from council? We will move on with a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item F, request approval resolution 2017-55, fiscal year 2017 budget amendments. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing the manager.
This is your annual action at the end of the year to essentially reconcile the revenues as well as the expenditures, and it's summarized in the resolution. I don't know if you want me to go into a great deal of detail in regards to it.
Could you just explain what accounts for, I guess, the main overage, I guess? If it can be briefly.
Well, can you be more specific?
I guess where do we spend more than we had budgeted, I guess?
I'm looking for the resolution. And if I could ask Tom to come up as well.
Good evening. Tom Mead, Finance Director. To answer your question, I guess, I don't know if we got, with 28 funds and I don't know how many different departments, it, some will be a little more, some are a little less. I mean, we gotta go through the year and stick as close as we can to the budget, but things come up, things happen. I don't know that there's, in going through them all, anyway, and again, I gotta go back and, as silly as it sounds, the one thing that we really have to watch for in the current year is when the auditors come in, if we are a dollar over in our expenditures, I spend a dollar more than what we say we're gonna spend, they're gonna write us up. If we're $100,000 less, or a million less, or whatever, they're not. So when we're in this current year, when we're doing this stuff right here, we're trying to be very conservative to make sure that we have taken into account anything that may happen from the day we start this process back in September through the end of the year. So having said that, we usually come at you at this time of year with something that looks a little uglier, I guess, than what you'd like to see. And as you've seen in the last two years, we usually come out quite a bit better than that. And again, a lot of that is just so that we're in compliance with the audit. And I will say, one step in that direction, we did get our, get this straight, local community stabilization, something or other, this new name from the state. When they sent us this reimbursement for the personal property tax reform, we did receive that check earlier this, last week, it was in last week, and it was quite a bit higher than what we'd anticipated. And that's one that I noticed on listserv, on the treasures listserv around the state, as those checks were coming in the last week or so, I saw other treasures posting the same thing, that the checks were coming in higher than they had anticipated. It's a very complicated thing to try to calculate what it's gonna be. The state calculates it for us, and as luck would have it, ours came in higher, too. So in general fund alone, if I recall the number, I think it was about 50,000 higher than we'd anticipated. So like I said, that's gonna help tremendously on these numbers. But again, we're just trying to be conservative and make sure we take into account any expenses that may pop up between now and our, when we started this, and start bringing these to you back in September, October, and through the end of the year to make sure that we're not gonna go over. So I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Are there any other questions from council tonight on this agenda item? Thank you. Okay. Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item G, request approval resolution 2017-56, approve purchase of two police vehicles. So moved. Support.
Chief Scott Kip, Albion Public Safety. We're requesting the purchase of two new vehicles to replace two vehicles currently in the fleet that are getting to be the point of their, completely outdated. The one car is a 2006 with 152,000 miles on it. Our insurance company has told us that we can't use marked patrol cars anymore that have over 150,000 miles on it, and they prefer at about 120,000 miles we take them out of service. So this car is kind of out of service altogether, and at the age that it's at, it's actually sitting in the parking lot, not being used right now because it needs repairs, and I'm not putting money into it. So, and the second car that I'm looking to replace is a 2008 Chevy Impala with 121,000 miles on it, which is currently being used by Kerry Lynn Napi as our K9 vehicle. This vehicle, we actually took out of service about four years ago, and then we put it back into service when she got the K9 because we had to have a car for her. The problem with this vehicle is we've had problems with it ever since we've had it. It has some problem with the radiator, it gets air bubbles in it, and the air conditioner quit work, quits working, which for a patrol car isn't that big of a deal, but for a K9 vehicle is very important because the dog's left in the car, and so we need to replace this vehicle so that she has a vehicle that's safe for the dog to be in, so.
Is there any, councilmember Barnes, councilmember Spicer?
And I think it was a year, a year and a half or two years ago, we started that maintenance program where we were rotating cars in and out, we were receiving grants from different
Right.
Agencies for these vehicles.
We purchased a vehicle last year on a grant that paid for half that vehicle. We still have another payment to make on that vehicle this year. That vehicle currently has 16,000 miles on it. We have, we have four main patrol vehicles right now. One of them has 102,000 miles on it, one of them has 70,000 miles on it, and the other one has 60,000 miles on it. So they gain mileage rather quickly, and, and those are 2013, two 2015s, and one 2017. So those, those miles go up on them pretty quick. And so the new vehicle that we get this year would become a, a main vehicle in the fleet. The one with 102,000 miles would take the place of the one that we're taking out of service that's kind of a backup vehicle that we use when we, when we have to, where we've got extra officers on, type of thing.
Follow.
Yeah.
So my records show we have two behind that that should be coming up through the rotation in the next year and a half or two years, right?
Correct. My goal would be to replace one vehicle every year for the patrol. When you start counting the K9 vehicles, then that's when I have to ask for the extra vehicle. These vehicles will be bought over a three-year lease to purchase at an estimate of $81,000, I think is what it was overall, paid over three years.
Thank you.
So, wait, did you have a, did you, I don't know, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay, councilmember.
Chief, have we chose a vehicle yet, and are you getting one of the new ones?
No, I'm driving one of the old ones.
Exactly. What, what do we, are you vehicles, do we use, turn them in on trade, or?
We usually sell them at auction, depending on what we can get for them. Most of them are in such shape, by the time we're getting rid of them, we get anywhere from $10 to $1,500 for them. Or I should say $1,000, $1,500, yeah.
$1,000?
Yeah, $1,000. They're, police cars are in pretty bad shape when you take them out of service, so there's not a lot of need for them, so.
Thank you.
Any grant funding, any other, this is pure?
Yeah. This is all, this one's all on us this year.
Okay, so then, I guess I asked a question that my predecessor used to ask, what about the equipment in the cars?
Most of this is, includes new equipment.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to get at least one new computer out of this for the vehicles, which would update all of ours. We're still using two, two computers that are running on Windows XP that I can't update, and they don't service XP anymore, so we're really running, these computers are 11 years old, I think, so we're, we're on their last legs. The, i-if we don't replace lights and sirens and those things in these vehicles, obviously we're replacing vehicles that are 10, 12 years old, so that equipment's just as old as still in the vehicles. The only thing we will probably use out of these two vehicles is the radios that are in them.
Okay. So when we, I guess to follow up to councilmember Spicer's question, when we, however we dispose of the vehicles, the equipment and stuff, do we, how do you dispose of?
We keep some of it around as backup. We might use it in an older vehicle that we have. If we decide to put a siren in another vehicle, the Humvee that I outfitted with some equipment was the equipment that we took out of, from old vehicles that we just keep on the shelf in case we need it for something, so. But again, most of this stuff is old enough that it's not gonna
Work well. Okay. Are there any other questions from council this evening? Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item H, request approval of addendum to city manager's contract to increase wages. So motion? Moved and supported. Is there, do you want to just give a summary of what we did?
Oh, okay. So what you have before you is an addendum to the manager's contract that I put together. I made a slight change to today, but overall, all of the terms of the manager's contract from the September 2nd, 2016, or current contract the September second twenty sixteen, or current contract took effect September second, two thousand sixteen. It, it goes through September second eighteen. Uh, the only modifications that were made is that the compensation, uh, was increased to an annual salary of one hundred and five thousand dollars per year, continues to be paid at the same intervals as other employees. That, uh, pay increase in this addendum becomes effective January one of eighteen.
Any couns- any discussion with council? Councilmember French?
I can't remember what we talked about on Thursday, but, um, is this, um, effective September second of twenty seventeen? Or is it effective immediately?
I believe the manager waived it to the beginning of the year.
Well, if I could clarify, when I was making the request for the twelve thousand, I was willing to, um, compromise and make that start in Sep- in January of two thousand and eighteen. And the discussion relative to whether it would be September or January is really up to you.
Councilmember, uh, Barnes?
I would ask, because we as a council deliberated, um, this intended action on that date, I would think that we should go retroactive to September second.
Councilmember Spicer?
Oh, no, no.
Did you, was there a second, I mean, I don't know if there was a...
Are you making an amendment?
A friendly amendment, uh, based on the conversation and our actions from the past, and we came to a meeting of the minds and the language and an agreement that we would do the law fine. But actually, we amend this relative to the September second date, the anniversary date, and to the eight twenty eighteen.
Is there a motion to amend? Is there a second?
Sure. Yes.
Okay, a discussion on the, uh, the amendment.
See amendments?
Councilmember Lawler?
So, we are going back to September second of this year?
That's, 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 that's probably the language of the, of the motion. I, I guess, the question I have is how much do we know? Yeah.
Paying her three months at the new salary rate?
Well, do you want more one?
Yeah, you're right.
About thirty-five thousand dollars.
How much?
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
Not thirty-five.
No.
Wait, wait, what, is the total, excuse me?
No.
Is the total salary less her current salary, so... Let me just give you that as a number before you jump across here and, and throw it away. Lawyers aren't supposed to do that.
Yeah, with numbers, yeah.
Lawyers, exactly. Math, I love it. Except when calculating their bill.
About three thousand dollars.
Okay. And would that have to be?
Yeah, that is kind of...
Would that have to be amended into this budget?
Uh, whether or not it has to be amended in the budget, I don't know. I think, if I recall, there were, um, there were, uh...
Tom, could you come forward real quick? Thank you.
There were provisions built in to the budget that were actually not used this year.
Um, yes, I'm looking. I'm looking to see what we had in there, um, and trying to remember what we built into seventeen. I know eighteen, I was thinking we had some extra to build in. I'm not positive on seventeens. I would say to be safe, since we're here discussing and voting, I mean, this would be the opportune time to vote on, uh, budget amendment, 'cause again, if we don't spend it, the auditors aren't gonna, you know, write us up. If we don't have it in there and go over, then we will get written up. So, to be safe, I would suggest we do an estimate and make that amendment to the seventeen amended budget. If that works.
Okay. So, yeah, we'll, we can, we'll do that, yeah. So, is there any other discussion on the, the amendment to the resolution to make it, uh, I guess prorated back, which are active to, uh, contract renewal date? Okay, so, no further discussion, we'll have a, a roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns? And Mayor Brown?
Yes, so we're back to the main motion, which would include, um, the retroactive part, um, and the increase to one hundred and five thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion on the, the main motion with the amendment? Okay. Seeing none, we, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes, so, just a kind of parliamentary thing here. So, to satisfy what the, the, the Finance Director just mentioned, do we probably need to put a motion on the agenda? Councilmember French?
I would request a motion to add to our agenda, a revisiting of the budget amendment, item F, to include, um, the additional funds to support the agreement with the city man- relative to the city manager's contract wages being prorated.
Okay, I'll, I'll put that on the agenda. Item J, okay. So, there's a motion in the support, report, um, this is to add it to the agenda, so we need five votes. Um, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item I, uh, request first approval of council rules or procedures. We'll have a motion first.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move in support. Moved and seconded, uh, we will have discussion. So, I will, uh, ask, uh, Councilmember French to present, he was member of the committee for this.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, working with Councilwoman Sonia Brown and, and our mayor over the last year, we have, uh, arrived at a draft, uh, hopefully the final draft for your approval of, uh, Albion City Council Rules of Procedure. Uh, our city managers provided with you on your desk an original copy of our council rules, uh, which, uh, this council has used, uh, continuously since two thousand and four, when it was revised and adopted, uh, in its current form. Uh, our city clerk has made a number of language changes, which are part of this new, uh, old version, where we took out the gender bias, replaced he with their, uh, councilwoman, councilman with councilmember, et cetera. And that's the draft that you see here, and I provide it for you only for comparison between the old and the new. Early in our conversations back in January and February, uh, we took a look at four or five different other versions of council rules and procedures, uh, and we settled on a, a couple of, of versions that, uh, come to us from both Port Arthur and from, I'm not gonna remember, uh, that one that MML has provided us. And we took some things out of all of those, and included our own, and sort of wrapped it all together, uh, into one document that you see before you. Instead of eight or nine rules, I think, in our first draft, uh, old rules, we now have eighteen. And, and I think it, it clears up a whole bunch of things that, that we, uh, have been sort of having issues with over the seven years that, uh, that I've been on council. And so, I just wanted to point out a few of them to you. The first is rule number three, uh, on page three of your document. Uh, we've identified and clarified what we mean by special meetings and regular meetings, as well as study sessions and closed or executive session meetings. Um, we define them quite clearly, I think, um, in terms of, uh, when things should be presented, in terms of agenda items, and who can present those agenda items, especially with regard to both special meetings and, and, and study sessions. If you turn to, um, page, um, four, uh, rule number five, conduct at meetings, we are, we're, we expanded the preservation of order section significantly. Uh, we've been working under some of those rules regarding the amount of time that, um, that council members can speak and the public can speak. There's a section on, uh, rule number seven on page five that, that goes into that in some detail. We also added at the bottom of page five, in terms of written communication, really asking that individuals or groups are, who are, want to submit comments to the council via email, or be delivered well in advance of a council meeting. If something needs to be requested by the writer, uh, to be, uh, added to the agenda, there's gonna be, need to be some time, uh, given to our city staff to sort of incorporate, do any work that needs to be done in advance before coming to council as an agenda item. Rule number eight is about agenda and orders of business. It adds some time, uh, I wanna point out, eight A dash two. And, and we had talked a little bit about this before, that, that council has asked that the, that the staff provide counsel with the full agenda and all the information we need to help make our decisions by the Wednesday prior to a council meeting. So, what we did is we backed up, so that's five days before a council meeting. So, we backed up the request for people, whether it be the city, um, staff, or the city council, or the mayor, who want to bring things to the council for review to be included in the agenda. We've asked that, uh, those actions must be provided in writing through the city manager and the clerk ten days prior to the, um, the next, the item, the meeting in which that item is to be discussed. That gives the manager and the staff a chance to evaluate whether or not there's gonna be resources needed to be brought to bear to bring those requests to, to a voteable and actionable state. And it also allows them to work within their regular day-to-day operations. We have had conversations, uh, with folks about, uh, wanting to make sure that everything that appears on the agenda appears in writing in some way, so emails. And, and our, our mayor has made comment about using the city email system so, to allow for all of that to be sort of kept, uh, available. We also, uh, if you go to the bottom of page six and rule eight, we've, um, we had talked about changing the order in which we do our agenda with the most, um, and I'm sorry if I'm taking up too much time, but...
No.
We wanted to have the report, I think, of the city manager to happen at the beginning of the meeting rather than the end. That gives the city manager a chance to make comment on agenda items, um, and provide insight in a general way so that the council and the public are well aware of, of what the, uh, what's coming in the agenda, and how the city manager feels and the staff feel about a particular issue.
And then also, because, you know, sometimes the crowd bundles and people, you know, so basically...
That's right.
Have announcements earlier.
Thank you, thank you, that was the other reason, thank you. Rule nine and rule ten regarding resolutions and ordinances is pretty much boilerplate. And we, uh, we borrowed a little bit from Fort Huron, but also used our own, our own language in that. If you look at rule eleven on motions, uh, item C of that rule, a councilor has the right to withdraw his or her own motion. If there is no, if no one, no member objects, the motion is modified or withdrawn. And so, we wanted to preserve that a little bit, I think, so that, um, as we've also, we've experienced on council meetings where something early in the agenda impacts something later in the agenda. And so, we wanna be able to craft that agenda in anticipation of maybe a yes or a no, and then be able to remove that agenda item if it becomes irrelevant, um, in, uh, in the day of, in the, in the meeting, so... And then the rest of, of, um, is basically coming right out of our council rules, rule number twelve through se- through eighteen, which is basically definitions of appeals and point of order and rescinding, uh, suspending the rules and voting. Uh, we also clarified that a, um, when we have less than six members, or less than seven members of our council present at a meeting, we still need four votes to pass a resolution or ordinance, because that represents a majority of the sitting council, not the council in attendance. So, we never wanted to have an opportunity where you have a minimum number of councils, say, five people show up for a council meeting, a majority of that council will be only three votes, and that's a minority of our council in voting. And we don't want ever to have a situation where, because of some unforeseen circumstance, action gets taken with a minority vote of the council. So, that was cleared up, um, in, in these rules as well. So, I think that's about all I have to say about it. I wish that, uh, I thank our, our mayor and, um, uh, Councilwoman Brown for their help in generating this. Uh, I just would finally add that appendix A and appendix B, we've not yet gotten, I might say that we'll probably bring a friendly amendment to appendix A. In our council meeting with Coco from MML, we got this absolutely wonderful salmon or yellow sheet that had a very nice graphical interface about what the contents of appendix A are, so it doesn't change anything in appendix, but it, it makes it much easier for us as a council to follow. So, once we get that graphic, that will be replacing the chart of motions in our, in our council rules. And so, I would, I would say that if, if we can agree, that will be added once we get the graphic from MML. Uh, we can entertain a motion to approve these council rules as submitted.
And I think going forward, it'll be five votes, right, to, to amend?
That's correct, that's correct, I'm sorry, I, yeah, that's rule eighteen. If we were to amend our council rules, we need a, a supermajority of five members of our council to approve that.
Okay. Like I said, I want to commend Councilmember French and Councilmember Brown, um, and also thank council for allowing us to do this as well. So, hopefully it brings some, uh, uh, further order to our, uh, our operations here. If there's no further discussion, I, Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask, um, a citizen had asked me, um, about, um, the council rules and procedures, um, about the city manager and the mayor having a specific, um, time where they can get together and talk about, um, whatever it is they need to talk about, about the city of Albion. I said that I would mention it, I didn't know if it would, if it could go in our council rules or if it would go somewhere else, but, um, I did say I would mention it. And I think that person, um, for bringing that to the attention, but, um, so, I just wanna, um, let it be known that I did ask the question. If there is a way that can be done, if we could express it, um, while we're televised or in, for the community that's here today. So, with that being said, I don't know what...
Uh, thank, thank you for bringing that up, 'cause, um, I think I was at the same, uh, same kind of town hall event, um, where that came up, and, uh, you know, I'm in support of that, I talked to Councilmember French about that. Um, and so, I think that's something that would be appropriate to put in the rules, but I think that's something we can come back, hopefully at the beginning of the, the new year, and, and integrate. Uh, Councilmember French?
Thank you. Um, I received that request, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and in looking at what we have, and if you just look at our table of contents, um, in no place does this, um, really feel comfortable or fit in terms of an expectation of our mayor to be meeting with the city manager on a regular basis. So, um, I, we can put it anywhere we want, we could add another rule, but, um, because this was mostly about council meetings and not about, um, and preparation for those council meetings, I, I wasn't sure where it should go. So, I looked to the council to provide some help and insight as to where they would like that to be added, I'd be happy to add it.
Councilmember Reed and Councilmember Spicer?
I think that, that that would probably be something that'd come up after our meeting with Mr. Scott.
I agree.
And we could then decide what needed to be done about that and include it.
Thank you. Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you. I think Councilwoman Reed just encompassed what my comment was going to be, and that was basically an explanation as to what did that entail? So, we're not gonna make any, take any action or make any movement on this until after our meeting with the attorney, then. I, I'm okay.
Councilmember Barnes?
Well, I guess, uh, I'm not understanding the intent of that meeting. The city charter specifically states that the city mayor is to direct this meeting, as the chairman and controls the meeting. as the chairman and controls the meeting. So, with the mayor being in charge, because this is his meeting, what are the dynamics of that meeting with the city manager when we all have one vote?
I think, like I said, we can... I don't want to prolong the meeting on this one, but like, I had the privilege of meeting with a number of residents in Councilmember Lawler's precinct, like a Sunday or two ago, and that was one of the recommendations, was to, you know, try to set up a time where, you know, there's a kind of check-in time where, you know, basically, you know, the mayor and the manager can discuss certain things about what's coming before council and those kinds of things. But I think that I'd agree with Councilmember Reed and Spicer, that that might be one of the things we can talk with the Attorney Smith about in January, if, you know, the helpfulness of that in kind of moving us forward in the next year, so.
I just wanted a clarification in regards to the process. So, this is considered the first reading of the council rules of procedure? There'll be a second one presumably in January. Are you anticipating that will be after the January 11 meeting with Attorney Smith?
Yeah, we can do it on the 15th of January.
16th.
16th. Oh, you're right.
Yeah.
So, we're meeting on?
Tuesdays.
Tuesdays, yeah. Yes.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Okay. Thank you. So, this is... And I should say, on that note as well, not only will amendments or changes take five votes, but they'll have to be over two meetings as well. So, there's... Seeing no further comment, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Item J, this is basically a request to amend resolution number 2017-55, fiscal year 2017 budget amendments.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is just to amend... Do we have the specific number? Do we need to set a number?
It's approximately $3,000.
Okay. So, I take your motion to be that? Councilmember French?
Yes, so moved.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? Okay. Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. City manager report.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor and council, for your consideration relative to my compensation. I do appreciate it. In regards to the city manager's report, I'm very thrilled to announce that for the month of December, our employee of the month is Kent Phillips, the wastewater treatment plant superintendent. And at the employee holiday party, we selected the employee of the year, and it's Detective Nicole Weigent. And she refuses to take a picture, but... So, if anyone sees her out and about, and if you take a picture, there might be a reward. But we're very...
Can we call line 111 for the city council hall?
That's a thought. That's a thought. But we're very proud of our employees and the celebration of their dedication and hard work throughout the year, so we were thrilled to recognize the Kent as well as Nicole. And as was mentioned, Superior Street is open for business, so we're really excited that this happened. And to be forewarned, in the spring, not when the school is having their graduation, they will finish the bricking of the Superior Street. Also, we have some really good news in regards to our health coverage through Blue Cross for vision and dental, in that we can increase the coverage relative to the dental at a reduction in our benefit cost, cost less to have a greater benefit. And then for the vision, it's a nominal increase in order to make that available, instead of once every 24 months or two years that have the benefit of new glasses or contacts every 12 months or once a year. And it's only like a couple dollars difference per pay. So, all of the unions were in agreement with that, so we're very glad to be able to make that modification to our health benefit program for them. And those are really the major things. Again, thank you to everyone who allowed for the employees to have their celebration of the holidays. We had a great time. I know what happens at the holiday party, stays at the holiday party, but I might have a video. So, again, thank you for allowing them that opportunity to just bond and have a great celebration to end up the year. And that pretty much concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Are there any future agenda items? Councilmember Barnes.
Austin Avenue with the elements of abatement, demolition, and the city's financial ability for the demolition.
Are there any in there? Okay. So, I had... One of the things that Councilmember Barnes had actually asked for or suggested was to have council have questions sent before the session with Attorney Smith. So, if we can maybe contact him and see how we can handle and get those things to him. I had a resident ask me about the solid waste fund and what's gonna happen with that or the funds that remain in there, so considering the single hall or thing, so that can be a discussion. Are there any other future agenda items? Councilmember Spicer.
Mayor, I don't know if this is too soon, but I'd like to get on the next or soon thereafter discussion with regards to the streets that are going to be, were gonna be considered for a year this next year. This is streets, not sidewalks or streets. Okay.
Councilmember French.
I'm gonna have a sidewalk discussion and how we fund what we do.
Are there any other future agenda items? Okay. Gotcha. Motion to excuse absent councilmembers.
Support.
Is there a second?
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. Councilmember Brown did notify me that she was under the weather this evening, so... All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. Public comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum. Are there any citizen comments this evening? State your name and... It's not citizen, excuse me, public comment. State your name and address. Seeing none, I just want to wish everyone happy holidays and a happy new year. This is the last sitting of the council this year, so hope you enjoy this end-of-the-year season, so.
I forgot to mention that city hall offices will be closed on Monday and Tuesday, that's November 25th and 26th, as well as the following Monday and Tuesday for the New Year holiday.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.